Isu?
Good.
Let's call a special meeting the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees order on Thursday, August 8, 2024 at 4:02 PM for the purpose of a work session to construct a single hauler trash bid and to discuss other township business. We'll call the role Ashrell.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
Sweattick here. Trustee Ashrell.
What I have for us are the single hauler bid specs to discuss. I didn't know if anybody else has any other topics, if we wanted to start with those first, since this is going to take a lion's share.
Yes, I asked Lynn Rotundo if she would join us this afternoon. She had some training for our email administration and some thoughts on, you know, basically how we can access, how we can do certain things with email accounts and perhaps how things maybe can be structured a little differently. So I, she was sharing some ideas and I thought it'd be a great idea if she could just come here and share those thoughts, just so we can hear her thoughts.
Lynn, if you don't want to be on camera at the table, since nobody else is here, just grab that microphone.
Okay.
Off of the podium.
I'm going to be on camera when I grab it, but okay.
We'll turn around and say hello.
All right, what did you want to start with?
Just roll with whatever.
Dealer's choice.
Okay, well, you guys had asked me to figure out if there was a way, and there is a way, to have, like when you're having a meeting, and I know there are mixed feelings about this, but I'm just going to let you know, when you have a meeting and you're on Zoom, and like we are right now, and you wanted to have a, like a help info, tech info, whatever, so that you could get messages, or one, like all three of you could get messages, and it would be in regard to not being able to hear, not being able to log in, or whatever it is. So there's a way to do that. All right, now it's set up as help@zoom, help@hinkleytp.org right now.
Isn't, isn't that already a function for the proctor? The proctor can't see that?
No.
I thought there was raise your hand kind of thing?
No.
I'm, I'm the proctor.
So if somebody does a hand raise, you don't see it?
Well, if I'm looking at it, I mean, but a lot of times.
Well, the same thing would be you'd have to look at your email too, either way.
Um, if I can just interrupt for a quick second.
Since I already did.
Right.
Yeah, he didn't even ask.
But I asked.
He raised his hand.
So when Lynn and I discussed this, yes, yesterday, we just talked about this. It's not so much for that because we've had that tech help ever since Zoom launched. And then we have never, ever, ever received an email to it. What I wanted to see, what I had mentioned to Suzanne, maybe six months ago, we had talked about this, is getting another trustee, or all of the trustees on like the admin email, so that, and it's specifically for things like this. Zoom is set up, it goes automatically to the admin. So every once in a while, I will be locked out of Zoom. It will not let me log into Zoom. And if that's happening before a regular trustee meeting, that's 6:30 on a Tuesday, Suzanne's not here, so I have no way to get that password to log into Zoom. So for things like that, I would like to see an email so that we all have access.
Right.
To that.
So we could name it whatever we want. Admin's taken up with so many other things. I was going to make it be like a, you know, we have that one that's right now, it's suspended. It is, come on.
Info.
Is it info? I thought it was, no, it's not info. It's the one that you mentioned that was set up.
The tech.
The tech help.
I suspended that because.
Right.
It never received an email.
My wonderful thing is not showing me. Virtual tech help, that's what it was. So we can have that be the alias for the Zoom. So instead of having it go to admin, it could go to virtual tech help, and then I could make you guys be a group with that email. So you would all see the email if that was the case.
So let me get this straight. Your, your issue is if you get locked out, you need to get a password, and how is having an email going to help you get a password?
Because what happens was.
This is, I'm sorry.
Okay, what happens is when you ask to, if you get locked out for some reason, a, an automatically generated email goes to whatever password is in the Zoom client as, as our setup. So if I make it something that is shared between the three of you.
It sends a temporary password.
It sends a temporary password, and it sends a, it's like a code, is what it is.
So you, because you know there are different views on this, I will weigh in at this point and say, I would like to abandon Zoom and just go to YouTube where we don't need passwords. It records the meeting, gets posted for viewing afterward.
Lynn can speak on that also.
Okay, there is, if we do that, there is a, an encoded software that is necessary in order to do that.
A what?
Encoding software. It's, you can't just record the meeting and have it automatically go up to YouTube. It has to have, there's a process in between. It's an encoding software. And I did some research on it a while back, but it's been like six months. And there's different ones that can be purchased. I gave that information to Monique when she asked me about it. But I haven't researched it any further because I've got Zoom working now, so.
But, but one of the big reasons that we said, oh, we wouldn't necessarily be any better is it has the updates, just like Zoom has the updates. So if I am, our source of frustration with Zoom is that we have these updates where it just automatically happens, and we don't know about it until we're trying to record a meeting. And now all of a sudden, we realize there was an update and we can't record the meeting. Same thing could happen with YouTube.
Right, and right now, the way I have it set up, anytime there's a meeting, I make sure that before I leave, it is working. Now, I don't know what would happen between that time and the, and the next time there's a meeting, but I don't know if you guys have run into any snags in the last couple of weeks, but I've been making sure that anytime that there's a meeting, I run through a test. I have to delete it out of there, but I do run through the test to make sure.
And I'm not, I'm not married to Zoom. I mean, I am not opposed to trying something like YouTube. I just want it to be clearly understood that we could still have the same issues.
I just don't know that, that, I don't know enough about YouTube either, but I do know there are millions of people that utilize it for that purpose, recording. We don't have to jump through the hoops to hold a live meeting any longer because we're not doing any interacting. We can't do that. We're not allowed to.
Right.
So, and like Zoom, you have a client and you have the Zoom meetings. So you've got, so like if your client, like if I get a message saying there's a new update available, and if I ignore that, at some point, it may take me out of sync with the Zoom meeting thing. I don't know if that would be true of YouTube because you don't really have a client for YouTube. You have.
Now, is the software you're talking about for live streaming or for recording and uploading? Because they're different. Recording and uploading.
Right.
Okay.
And then there is a separate software for live streaming as well, but I don't know, I don't know all the specs on it. I mean, there's like, there, when I researched it, there was at least 10 or 12 that I saw that were high, come highly recommended, but there was like a, it was like three pages worth. And I gave that to Monique when I researched it.
It may be worth asking a professional to get some information on relative to, you know, our options and what is more streamlined for our needs. You know what I'm saying?
It's, if I remember correctly, it was also, which, which I don't want to make it seem like I'm opposed to it because I'm not. Just making sure we have all the facts is that it also would have been an additional expense with BNT because they would have to come here and change some, change some of the stuff. They're the ones who set us up with, with Zoom. And I did speak with them very, very briefly, a couple of, not even a couple of months ago, I mean, it was probably nine months ago at this point, that they told me they would have to make changes to the system if we were to go to YouTube. So I just want to make sure we're like, it's not just a, okay, let's pay a hundred dollars and we're, we're good to go. So, and there's bound to be hiccups with the transfer as well, but maybe it will work better. I mean, it's a colossal pain in the butt every single year when I have to renew the Zoom contract because there is, the contact always changes for me, and it seems like every single year, it is literally down to the day our contract will expire. So.
And we know the issues, the issues that we've had utilizing the product throughout this past year as well.
Right.
Well, the way it was set up, whenever there was a, a power outage, let's say, it was not set to, it was just set to shut down. So, and now, the way we worked it when BNT came here and helped me walk through it, it is set up to, if the power outage goes out between, like overnight, it's set to reset itself the next day and, and power on and get everything all running.
Mm-hmm.
So we kind of eliminated part of it, but I mean, there's, there's always going to be problems, no matter what kind of software you get. And there will always be updates and, but I've learned a lot since, since taking that on.
Well, I mean.
What? I.
Is there someone there?
It's Suzanne. It's raining. Is somebody's windows open?
Yeah.
Oh, Jack, did you leave?
It invites it to rain.
Do you like to step out and close your car windows? Okay. Um.
Well, so just as a side note, you mentioned BNT. They're actually going to be here tomorrow because I've asked them to be one of the people to kind of tell me about what kind of keyless entry systems they have.
Oh.
And actually, it'll be, Mike Schroll will be joining us, so kind of both going to look at it, but they are going to be here actually tomorrow at 1:30.
Heard about that, actually.
Did you?
Yeah.
So if you wanted to tap BNT and ask them about the options on.
At 1:30?
Yeah, they'll be here at 1:30.
You won't still be here at 1:30, will you?
No.
Do you want to be?
I can be, but I can't stay real long because I have other appointments later that afternoon, but we can talk about that later.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I could just kind of mention it to them, and then maybe there could be a time they come back and meet with Lynn to go over some of those.
Is Jess coming? Is it Jess who's coming out?
Um, there's like a couple of people on the appointment.
Okay.
I can tell you. They're finding it.
Okay, well, worst case scenario, I mean, if, if you guys don't connect, then Cindy can begin that conversation and we can have them back out, but that would be ideal if we could get all of the questions answered.
Yeah.
At the same time. It is Jess.
Jessica?
Yeah, it's Jessica, yeah.
Yeah, it's Jessica, Mike, and Eric.
I have an appointment this evening at 6:15 where I will actually see Jessica, can ask her if she can come a little bit earlier.
Well, okay, well, that's an idea.
I mean, I can, I can ask if they would be able to come a little bit earlier to talk about.
Like at 1:00 instead of 1:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll ask her.
Yeah, I mean, they were open from, they were open all afternoon, and I just picked 1:30. So they're, they'd probably be available, I'd be my guess, so.
Okay. That's assuming we're wrapped up here and I get to that 6:15 appointment.
That's true.
Okay. Well, that's a start. That's getting a little bit more information than we got last time, and that timing wise, that might work out because our contract is up with Zoom, February 4th. I know this because every single year I feel like I'm signing the contract on February 4th.
Well, yeah.
Even though I start the process in December.
Prior, yeah.
I start the process in December every single year, but yes.
Would there be a contract with YouTube, or would that just be kind of open-ended?
It's open-ended. There was no contract with YouTube.
Yeah, so that's.
The cost was you had to get the encoding software.
Right.
But yeah.
And I, I believe there are free ones out there, but I don't know how.
You get what you pay.
Reliable they would be, so.
Mm-hmm.
Or how often they're updated, and it's, there's a lot of moving parts, but did you want me to talk about taking the Gmail and zipping the file and then just shows up as a?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
How that can be done.
Okay, so we have some, as you know, some suspended accounts that, of people that haven't been here for a while. I'll just name the, not, I won't name any, but the people that were admins before, administrative assistants. And those haven't been open since 2020 and 2021. But what can be done is, is we can unsuspend those for a little bit and basically create a zip file and back up the, the email contents into a zip file that can be accessed later. I don't know how it shows up because I haven't looked into it yet, but that can be done. So that's an option if we want to take, it, I believe it zips it into two gig files. So if, if it's more than that, then it just, it just.
Some of them will be more.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm looking at it.
I mean, phrases.
Over 10 gigs.
Yeah.
So, so.
And so then that would allow us to like delete the account.
Delete the account, which would save us money.
Right, bring down.
In the long run.
But not the data.
And, but not the data. We still would have majority of the data. And there's different, there's like 53 options on the, what you want to zip into that file.
Well.
With calendar and all that, which we, I don't know if you guys would, would really want, but there's, the actual Gmail is, there's three selections. So I went through and looked at them the other day, so.
Okay. I, that sounds like it's our, but I mean, a lot of these, I think we will be able to just, we won't have to back up. I, I need to follow up with the prosecutor with that email.
Right.
That we talked about yesterday, so.
So that's just so you know.
Okay. I will, I will send him an email tonight to see where we go.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you send me the bid specs for what you guys were just going to talk about today?
10 minutes ago.
Oh, okay, all right, because I looked earlier on and I didn't see.
Oh, wait, no, sorry, 25 minutes ago, the meeting started 20 minutes ago.
Your clock in your office.
Yeah, my clock in my office does not work, we just discovered. Um.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm good.
Thank you for taking the time to meet with Brian on Saturday and go over all of that and becoming an administrator. So that's going to make it much simpler on everyone in the township now that you have the accessibility to all of that and you have a better understanding of it. So thank you for taking
No problem.
Your time on a Saturday to do that. Um, okay.
And since I brought up the keyless entry, so just kind of for your information, I had, because I asked the chief who they were working with a couple of years ago on keyless entry. So I ended up talking to Mike Schroll, and, and he gave me the two vendors that they had. Or it was BNT they worked with, and he said, he mentioned that Zadar, the people that the, also do it. So we've got an appointment next week for Zadar. So, you know, the point is to get some quotes. You know, originally I had the one from Security 101, you know, doing the perimeter doors. The police department, I know they're interested in doing theirs. So I just figured be an opportunity for all of us to hear the same thing. And, you know, if you do move forward, it would kind of make sense to have, you know, one system, uniform, and that way it could be administered, you know, from one point, or you could have a backup administrator, you know, however. So just having those meeting discussions, presentations.
Relative to that, as well as computer systems, I did see there are opportunities, grant opportunities right now for cybersecurity.
Mm-hmm.
And that may fall under that if it's being utilized through a computer network.
Right.
As well as creating, moving to a .gov domain.
Yeah, I saw that. That kind of was interesting. So the hinkleytp.org would become like hinkley.
Twp.gov.
And that would be more secure. That would be a massive migration.
Face.
But, I mean, but that's, and I think that's something that cyber security grant would be more directly applicable to.
That's separate. The .gov migration, the maximum available there was 9,500.
Right.
To do that.
Right.
Cybersecurity portion is its own grant.
Oh, is it? Okay, all right. So, and maybe that's something even when like BNT's out tomorrow and just bring up with them to see what that would entail for us. Because that would mean.
Then you could move all email addresses to .gov.
Yeah.
And then we'd wipe out Gmail.
Oh, and we wouldn't have to pay for it.
Yeah.
And that would also open up an opportunity. So one of the things that I always thought was just kind of awkward was that our boards and commissions, that, you know, they should have
Yes.
For board and commission purposes, a township email, but in fact, you know, you're using your own personal email with a qualifier, you know, like HTDC. So that would give us an opportunity to issue township emails to our boards and commissions as well. So maybe, yeah, so I guess, you know, like, I, I don't know who all the IT resources are that towns uses, you know, we got Lighthouse, I don't know exactly where their capabilities are, but, you know, certainly throw that out to BNT and ask for, you know, their uh, feedback on whether that's something that they do or, or what that would entail.
Yeah, I don't think that's anything that Lighthouse offers.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, it's got to be somebody that sets up domains and, and can attach the emails with them and stuff like, do that kind of stuff.
Well, that was always.
Now, it's a network-based.
That was always Brian, which is now Lynn.
Yeah, but that's, this is at a different level when you're playing with domain names.
Yeah.
It's, it's also with, with us, it's with SiteGround right now. The domain name and everything like that. It's a, it's just so you know.
Well, that's just your DNS host, you know, it's just whatever. Okay. Um, but anyway. So, so noted. That's all. We can get to trash if you want.
Do you have anything before we move into trash?
Don't believe so.
All right, let's talk some trash.
Who's that, Joe?
Um, so what I really paid closer attention to were, was the more recent bid specs that were sent out, that I sent you guys all a copy of. Lynn, you got yours 30 minutes ago. It just, it's more concise, I feel, than what the township sent out five years ago. Which one do you guys want to dig into, or?
Well, I, I tell you, I read them both. But the, the second one that you gave us, yeah, it's more concise, except that the model, I guess, would be different, you know, in terms of the, the municipality having control over a lot more of the activity, whereas we are actually trying to go in the opposite direction. And so I, you know, there was like some, there's probably like good parts to use out of there. But you know, but they're actually got more control than even what we have currently today with Kimball.
I agree.
I don't know that, you know, which makes it.
I agree, and I think that we'll be able to make ours even smaller than this one because I think that there is more in here than what we want. You know, we're trying to eliminate a lot of.
I'd like to, if we could, I'm assuming that you both went through. But I'll start, let's start with the township. Want to go through?
Yeah.
I'd like to, if we could.
I don't have a hard copy of that printed.
I have a hard copy, but.
Anybody have anything in section one?
Yeah, because I don't have a hard copy. Lynn, do you have a hard copy of this printed?
Which?
Of our bid specs?
From 2019.
From 2019?
Uh, probably not. Either, I think I.
I gave you that, yeah.
And actually, I can't find, can't find it.
I'm in Mayland.
As we go, you got anything in section one?
I, no, I do not.
In section two, the only thing I noted were the number of residential units would have to be updated.
Yeah.
And I don't have that information.
Right, I just highlighted that just to note that it needs to be looked up.
Lynn, you probably know that.
3,438.
Sing it out when you got it.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt.
3,438.
But that was as of last fall. They've increased probably about another 10 to 12.
If I can say, it's always since noon, you know.
I would have to get that information from the new home bills.
Publish this.
It'll go up even more, yeah.
Or you can get that information, but it's, right.
Just noted for.
Yeah, I just highlighted it as something.
Obviously, all the dates, it would have to be corrected. Then, anything else in section two?
On that page or total section two?
Total section two.
Just, just dates, right? That's all I had highlighted.
All right, section three?
Terms, I think everything can stay the same in terms of terms.
Another thing I did note is under the definition for cans, it says containers must have two handles and not exceed a capacity of 40 gallons. Is that correct?
It's like those things you buy at Home Depot or whatever, you know.
I don't even know why that's in the bid specs because everybody provides their own containers.
Well, can, so a can is provided by the resident?
Yeah.
Okay.
A can is provided by the resident, but they still, they don't even let them. They pull the bags out. That's for like bag service.
Okay.
Well, not, no, because you can, like today, I mean, you can have your your bin out there, but you can add another trash can of garbage for them to take. You know, as a secondary.
If you have full service, you can add another cart.
Can, yeah.
They call them carts, but yeah.
Well, there, there is a cart, but I'm, but I'm just thinking like, you know, you can go to Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever and just get a trash can and fill it and just put it next to your cart.
Right.
Issued by, by Kimball.
So you have nothing else in the definitions? And then in, or I have nothing for instruction of bidders? We have a number here again.
Well, four, on page 14, you've got the number of residences again. Paragraph 4.8.
He's just updated that. In 5.1.
She had it also here, I didn't catch.
But I understand.
Oh.
4.8. Are, are you in section five already?
I am now.
Do you have anything in four?
But yeah.
He's still in four? Go ahead.
Yeah.
He updated that.
Okay.
And after that?
And then there's the dates, obviously.
Yeah.
All throughout. So, right, and then, right, quantity on 5.1, and then.
I highlighted two private rooms.
Yeah.
Are there any additional? That, we'll have to find that.
We have, I, I just made a
Yeah, I did.
Note to take a look at that.
Okay.
Private room.
And then that paragraph.
So, Ridge, is that considered a private room?
Yeah, the one on Ridge is identified, and then there's one on Mattingly. There's four homes off of Mattingly. The one on Ridge.
Oh, the dead end part of Mattingly.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know that there's anything else right now, but.
There shouldn't be anything new.
We'll just double check that. I don't think there is. And then the paragraph just below it now talks about the opt-out 5%. So that is something we need to look at.
Strike it. Strike it. I, I mean.
And five point one, just above five point two, that last paragraph. Residential units shall not exceed five percent. So, um. We're, we're getting, we're gonna have to kind of rewrite that. Strike that or whatever, but residential units, you know. I don't know how we're gonna want to write that, but we don't want to cap it at five percent.
Well, I had suggested a, a sliding scale in the past.
I, my recommendation, um, from my conversations with the trash companies would be to completely eliminate. That entire, um, section about opt-out.
So no opt-out?
No opt-out. It's like people, whoever wants to can opt-out.
And they can contact directly to the whoever we end up going with.
So they negotiate with the provider to opt-out? Is that what you're saying?
No, the talent, it will be part of the, that anybody who wants to opt out of trash service can opt out. It, they can't, they can't, let, let's say we stay with Kimball, right? You can't opt out of Kimball to go with Republic because it's a single hauler trash district. So you can't do that. But anybody who wants to opt out of the service can opt out of the service. If they have other means of disposing of their trash, if they have a business in Medina County, if they take it to the dump, it's, I mean. That, that's what we have been discussing for the last year. Well, last three years with Kimball, but.
Are you thinking that's gonna raise the cost?
That's, that's the thing. How, how does, how does a contractor bid that? You've had this discussion with the contractors?
I, I mean.
Just with Kimball?
Just with Kimball. And I know. You can impact the price. Because at the end of the day. And I'm, and I'm fine, it, you know, if we want to do like a twenty percent cap. I'm fine with that because I don't think we're even gonna get to a twenty percent cap.
I don't either.
I think that our opt-out number is probably closer to, I think we would have. Nine percent, eight percent, or nine percent of the community opt out, tops. But I don't want to see us get into a situation where even one person is denied who doesn't want it. So, I mean, if you want to do a twenty percent, I would rather go higher than lower. What, what are the eyebrows for?
Um, if we, right now, if we would have two hundred and fifty opt-outs of the amount of residences, not the amount of people. Of three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight as of last count, um, that would be like a seven percent opt-out, just to give you an idea.
And how many applications did we receive last year to opt out?
Well, you're gonna have to give me a second.
It was under two fifty.
Yeah.
And there are some people though who.
Don't even try.
Well, who, or who contacted Kimball directly.
And then.
And got an opt-out to them because they had a business and maybe they were using Kimball in their business. And so Kimball gave him an opt-out on their residence. I know of somebody who's, who has that like situation.
They didn't do that for me and I have a Kimball dumpster.
Well, but you know, you didn't beg hard enough. But, so, you know, you can have those situations where.
So if you guys want to do a percent, I'm fine with a percent, but. You know, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't even get to ten percent, but I don't want to take that gamble and say fifteen, because then what if fifteen's not enough? Um.
You also have a lot of new. I mean, it's, but you have a lot of new residences coming into Hinckley. I mean, it's about, last year it was like twelve or fifteen new residences. This year, I'm. Uh, based on the new development that's off of Stony Hill, there's gonna be more than that, so. And, and other developments as well.
Which will likely utilize a service.
Right, because they're in a development.
Right, right.
So, well, do you guys want to put a percent then?
I'd like to do a little bit more research.
That's fine. I mean, based on, I, the, what Lynn and I have been doing is trying to keep track of how many opt-outs. We get every year to kind of come up with this number. Now, I, how many requests?
Not necessarily that they.
Correct.
Met the.
Well, right, because we always exceed, we always exceed number of requests versus number of opt-outs that we have. Um, but I also know that there are people who say they just don't even try anymore. So I know that there are people that. You know, of that. Let's say there's maybe a total of two hundred and seventy-five, but twenty-five of the two, of the two seventy-five don't even attempt it. Um, so I know that that happens also.
Just an idea, just to give you an idea, in twenty twenty, we had two hundred and seventy-five applications to opt out. Um, the amount of applications denied in that first year alone were a hundred and twenty-three. Because our number was, our max number was one fifty-two. Last year, we had a hundred and ninety-two opt-out applications received. We were only accepting a hundred and seventy-two. Based on the figures that were provided from the Medina County Auditories, and we had denied twenty. So.
Gone down.
It's gone down considerably.
Considerably, but I also.
Percentage, the percentage of opt-outs didn't go up.
The percentage of, I mean, the number of opt-outs went up.
Right, by twenty over five years. So, just so you know.
But that's because.
So. I, based off of the survey that we sent out last year, then. The number of people, the, the survey results were very low, um, the people who responded.
Yeah, we had.
Frankly, I'm stunned because I thought that overwhelming results of that survey would be no. Don't keep single hauler, and it was just the opposite. It was an overwhelming majority said yes, maintain a single hauler. And of the people who said they would opt out. Of the surveys that we received, Lynn, was it like seventeen? No, it was like. Four percent of the people who responded said that they would opt out if they could. Which is even less.
So. It was an overwhelming amount of people, and we talked about it at one of the other work sessions. It was an overwhelming amount of people that, of the people that have opted out in the past. Were happy with a single, single hauler. They didn't, they didn't want to go back to having choices. And I, I don't remember the numbers. I was trying to pull it up, but I can't do it real quick, so I don't have it, but I can look it up.
So, I, I would be more comfortable. Saying twenty. But if you guys want to go with fifteen, I would be open to a fifteen percent opt-out, but I would not want to go any lower than fifteen. And I don't think that we're even gonna come close to fifteen, but I think that that is kind of a promise that we made to people. Of anybody who's gonna want to opt out, we want to ensure that they can opt out.
Okay, just to give you an idea of number, if we'd go with fifteen percent based on the, a number of residences last year. It comes to an opt-out figure of five hundred and sixteen.
At fifteen percent.
At fifteen percent. So fifteen percent would give us five, that's more than enough for what we've had.
Reached that number in the first year when you had probably the most.
Right. But, you know, the, the first year when the, the contract interpretation was different. Um, anybody that had a business in Hinckley. If it wasn't at the same ad- address as the residence, they were allowed to be business exempt.
No, that was second year. That was not the first year.
Okay, second year. Well, okay, sorry.
That's why the number went down so much from, that is why the number went down so much from the first year opt-out request. To the second year opt-out request, because the second year is when. Still, nobody knows where it came from, that clause of business exemptions.
Right.
That was why you saw the number go down by like forty or something like that, because then all of a sudden. Asherel Studios didn't have to fill out an opt-out. They got a business exemption.
Right.
Then we found out that's actually not a thing, so.
Yeah.
Asherel Studios does not do an opt-out. Asherels don't pay for trash, but that was, that was why there was that.
Huge dip.
Big, big difference in it. And then now you have people that just. I, I've been told by many people, they don't even try, but I think if we go to fifteen percent, we are not gonna hit that number. And I would rather, I would rather proceed with caution.
Well, like I said, I, I just do a little bit more homework on it before I. Commit to it. If I did, I wouldn't want, I think I would go with a fifteen percent number if we did that, but. I still, I still want to do a little bit more of it.
Okay.
Anything else there?
No, I'm, I'm just kind of thumbing through the pages while you're.
Right, the next thing I have in section five.
At which, on that other one?
Yeah.
Right now? No. I couldn't remember if they did an opt-out or not.
They didn't.
They didn't.
But that city.
Right, no, I mean, I looked at it, but I, I haven't gone back to look at it at this, I mean, right now, we're going through our old one.
In five ten, it says residents will have carts with the lid opening towards the street. I don't know if that's enforced. I see, you know.
It actually is.
It is?
It just started being enforced more, I, I've never seen it before, but, uh. Every week I get service, no service tags from Kimball and.
Is that because of how they lift the can?
Yes, yes, it depends on what kind of garbage truck they have doing that pickup, but yes.
Okay.
Which, um, oh, is that five, five point ten?
That's it?
Oh, okay. I thought it was a special.
In five ten E, there's the opt-out procedure.
Yeah, I just kind of like circled it.
Which that can be, I mean, that can be completely.
Well, it depends what you're gonna do. And, um, then that ties that affidavit to opt-out where I think. People have to state where else they're taking their rubbish. You know, that's legally accepted.
Right, but this is, in this, the contract, the township handles it all, and I don't think the township should handle any of it. That, so that's where I think that should be removed. I mean. I think the township should be removed from, we don't work for Kimball or any other trash hauler.
This needs to stay in though. If we have an opt-out, this needs to stay in with specifying that the contractor is responsible for handling it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
But we'll remove the township, like any.
Yeah, any fingerprints of ours.
Right.
What one, what section was that?
E.
Was, uh, five ten E.
And, well, this, and it's kind of moot, but, um, because you're gonna rework E, but. See, one of the things I saw is there was redundancy of some of these paragraphs throughout. This one, so like the, there again, it says, how many can opt out, you know, the five percent, it's already stated elsewhere.
Right.
You know, I, there's, we don't, I'll probably point them out as we go, but there's some things that are just kind of like repetitive, yeah.
Then I have, uh, five eleven. It'd be the top of the next page if five eleven starts. Contractor place, required to place the cart in an upright position with the attached lids closed. And I know that's not enforced. Does that matter?
But didn't Lynn just say that they're starting to?
They're starting to enforce.
This is the contractor job to put the cart back and close the lid.
Ah, yeah, how are we gonna tell? That, that never happens. In fact, that's how I know when garbage has been picked up. Some, on the street because the people's, half the people's lids are open.
And, yeah, it just depends on the trash, whoever's picking up, whoever the driver is, basically. Mine or not.
Mine or hers?
And they just, you know.
They must know.
Uh, I will go to six point three, starting and ending time. We have a five AM start time.
We've heard from a resident or two about the start time.
Just a little bit.
I think Brunswick has a six.
I would do six. I, I would, I would, but, but they actually, Kimball starts at six. Kimball does not start at five.
You know, they use sometimes five thirty. They're picking up garbage.
Is your contract set?
I believe it's five thirty in the morning.
Okay.
My guy has been there like minutes after five.
It says five AM to seven PM.
Well, you don't have dogs barking to alert you.
But, what I will say.
Are you pacing?
What I will say with that though is that minimizes the conflict with bus traffic, buses, school buses and. Other stuff. Is that something that we want to look at? I mean.
I, I would say start at six, not five, because we get. We do get people that complain about the start time.
Yes, we have.
I would be okay with that.
Ending time's still seven P? If you move the start time back by an hour, do you want to extend it to eight P or? I guess.
I don't think that it takes them that long. I think it's just that.
Those are the approved hours.
Yeah, where they structure, how they're gonna dispatch vehicles, so. It's not like they hate a full twelve hours. Fourteen hours. Then I don't have anything until eight, section eight.
What page are we on?
Twenty-six.
That would be the paragraph on, uh. Delinquencies.
Sorry.
Once again, remove the township's fingerprint behind.
Let me, can I, can we just step back? Six point four notice to residential units. Um, this is where they're providing. You know, their rules or whatever, the procedures and obligations, and it, the way it's been set up is that, um. They supplied in a seal-plastic bag attached to each recycling cart delivered to the residential unit. And then after that, um, at their expense, they provide the information to each residential unit. And then provide the same information in PDF version to the township for use and printed materials are on their webpage. So you still want to continue doing that? Or do you want the trash? Hauler to just do the direct communications to the residences? Not just a question, you know.
I, I, I would like them to communicate to the, uh, trash hauler. I want the township removed from.
So I think you gotta look at six point four because after the first year of contract, you know, like after. Okay, here's all your new carts, so here's, you know, a little baggie with all our rules. So subsequent years. Provides the information to PDF for township to use. And then subsequent notices shall be submitted to township for approval more than thirty days prior to anniversary and.
No, it says annually thereafter any extent and, and any extension years, the contractor, at the contractor's expense. Shall provide updated collected, collection information to each residential unit.
Right, then.
And then copy us on it. For use on printed materials or our website.
But then read the next sentence, the initial notice, including procedures and obligations, shall be submitted to township for approval. Subsequent notices shall be submitted to township for approval. Contractor should not directly mail to any residential unit an advertisement.
So they're just getting our approval.
They're saying before they send it out, we get to see it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted.
That we know we need to clean up the delinquencies and billing.
You know, Ashley. Seven AM to seven PM. I thought it was maybe six.
For Brunswick?
Mm-hmm. Or seven AM to seven PM.
Yeah, my only question to that is, do we wanna let them out in our early, again, the school buses, they're usually running around seven, seven thirty.
Hmm, buses start at six.
Yeah, the buses start at six.
Tell you that because my bus comes in at six oh five.
Actually, some of them start earlier than that, but yeah.
So should we start them at three?
There's a thought. Let's just start them at ten AM. That way we completely avoid.
So we've already got diesel engine traffic at six? That what you're saying with the buses?
Yeah, I mean, we already have the track. I'm just. We can keep it at six AM if you guys wanna keep it at six AM, but. I mean, if right next door, they're starting at seven AM, why not start here at seven AM?
Well, they may have more trucks assigned and so it doesn't take as much time.
Is it, is Brunswick bigger than we are?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Just a little.
Just a little, a lot more trash.
I know it's a more dense or more populated area.
Okay.
So where were you?
Sorry.
I, I've done it. Do you have anything else in there?
You're done with the. Um, well, uh, six point nine. I'm way behind you.
Are you just reading it now?
Well, I read it once and I, there's places I, I didn't mark off.
Handling collection containers.
Okay, so all reusable collection containers used by residential unit shall be returned to location from which they're removed, erect with lids in place. Okay, we just got through saying that.
Doesn't always happen.
They can't do that. This is where I said there's like redundancy in the thing. And I was like, but it's like, you know, um, that sentence is almost worthless. The next sentence, the contractor should immediately pick up or sweep up any materials that the contractor spills during collection. Now, now, this is a huge issue. Not that the, why you laughing? Not that they spill.
I never received pictures or emails or phone calls or texts about this. So, which is actually, I was going to get a picture because I was at Sharon Soccer Fields on Monday. Following a garbage truck.
So.
That was not Kimball. It starts with an R, and there's two different ones, so I will not say which one it was. But there was trash flying out of that truck. It was hitting my car. I mean, like, I'm talking like six pack box or twelve pack boxes of like, like, we're not talking small little things. And I so badly wanted to get a picture of it to say, oh, so it's not unique to Kimball, or it's not unique to Hinckley. It happens everywhere.
Right.
Looking for some kind of penalty clause?
Perhaps. So here's the complaint and the issue that people along major routes have ditches have. So what happens is it's not necessarily even when they're dumping the container into the front loader. It's when they take their front loader and dump it into the back of the truck. And uh, you know, people throw their garbage loose into the cans and stuff starts flying around. And recyclables, it happens a lot with the plastics and, you know. So I had somebody tell me, um, somebody who owns a lot of property, basically, you know, when he uh, gets in his cart. Or whatever to go on his property, he takes a trash bag because it accumulates to the ditches. And you know, he's basically picking up a lot of trash that comes out of the trucks and, and um, so. It's, so it, we have a clause in here that says they'll clean up, but they don't. And people don't appreciate it, so.
Uh, I will.
Where are you going with that? Is that what you're saying? I'm saying you wanna.
I, I think, I think we can put a penalty clause in there, you know, that if, if there's a, you know. Obviously, an obvious accumulation of rubbish. There should be some kind of penalty clause that resident.
Somehow you need to prove that it came from the truck.
Mm-hmm. No, I know. Yeah, right.
And I will say, when I have contacted Kimball, when people reach out to me, when there's um, a problem. With trash, you know, not necessarily, you know, a couple of bags in a, in a ditch, cuz that happens, right? But I mean, I've had people contact me, there's like, there's broken glass all over the cul-de-sac or. Um, it looks like a bag like tore as it was being dumped and there's trash all over. They do, they do go back and they clean it up.
Mm-hmm.
I, I have always heard um, very positive feedback about that. They do go back and clean it up. Now, the stray bags that are flying out of the truck and I don't know how you solve that problem. Because recyclables have to be loose. They can't be in bags. So I don't know how we solve that problem. And that is going to be the case with any trash hauler.
Yeah, I guess.
Um, but to Jack's point, how do you prove that it came from the Kimball or, sorry, it's just habit, Kimball? But how do you prove that it came from the trash truck versus somebody just driving down the street and throwing their?
So, okay, so as we try to remove ourselves from, you know, being the intermediary. That, you know, there should be some contact for residents to be able to contact Kimball to say, hey, your guys. Left a bunch of trash fly through the yard. You know, so there should be an obligation on the part of the trash hauler to clean up. And I mean, I've seen some of them do come out of their truck and pick up some of the loose debris, but once it starts flying into people's yards, that, you know. If it's a windy day, by the time they walk there, it'd probably be blowing into the next yard or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe that um. You know, that residents have an opportunity to contact the trash hauler for. Cleanup. I mean, I guess that really becomes a broader issue too. There's complaints. We're gonna have residents contact the trash hauler as opposed to contacting Lynn, right?
Yeah, the contractor will provide a direct line for complaints.
And then that's something that we can publish too.
Yeah.
Or, but I think, um, you know, it's, if there's um. And I don't know that we would ever know. I was gonna say if there's, you know, a, a number of complaints and that. Maybe there should be a penalty, but I don't even know what the penalty would look like, you know?
And how do we track that?
Yeah, exactly. Because if they become, if, if we remove ourselves as being the point of contact for those, then they're tracking it, so.
Right.
Well, so. I mean, we gotta keep six point nine in there, but um, I don't know that per sentence there really does anything.
It's a strong suggestion.
And, and handling of collection containers, it's more about cleanup of debris. This should be the title of that paragraph more than.
What was it?
Um, six point nine, so calling it handling of collection containers, it should be more about cleanup of debris. And, and then talks about oil leaks in here too, so it's, it's cleanup of trash debris and.
Clean up.
You know, like spill leaks. Leaks from vehicles, including hydraulic fluids, so it's kind of like everything. Cleanup of debris and um, vehicle. Vehicle what? Vehicle fluids.
Yeah. Lynn, if you can find this in a non-electronic format, that'd be nice. I mean, in an electronic format, instead of hard copy.
What?
The, the bid.
Okay, I'll try.
No, I don't need it right now.
I don't know what you guys are reading off of, cuz what I have is not anything that you guys have, so.
It was in the big box when I asked for the.
Oh, okay.
Kimball, when I asked for the.
Okay, alright, so the big guy.
A huge box.
So there is no electronic.
There should be an electronic.
Well, I could run this through a PDF, well, to be honest, I have a Word doc. Actually edited.
That was. The other one. That I emailed to you guys.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I get it.
Kimball contract.
Jack, what page are you on?
I was on twenty-two, that's where you were last.
Oh, okay. So, on page twenty-three, six point one three.
Mm-hmm.
Contractors' response to complaints. So that the township shall notify the contractor of any complaints received.
Yeah, we'll take township out of there.
It's, it's gonna be the resident, um, shall be provide, the contractor shall provide. A number where residents can contact them for complaints, so. Page are you guys on?
Twenty-three.
So in. Section eight. Eight point three, eight point eight.
Mm-hmm.
Seems to me that. They're kind of the same topic. Um, one talks about an annual, annually at the request of the township. Show me three V, the volumes, but then in eight point eight, the contractor shall prepare and report the following data of collection services. So.
Collection services.
Right, so is. Which is really the volumes. That's your tonnage report, right? Isn't that your monthly tonnage reports, Lynn?
I have it. I have it. I was gonna, I was just trying to figure out how to put it on. That's what I was trying to do. So give me, give me a couple of seconds.
Cuz it's PDF, oh, there's PDF.
It's PDF. You wanna print it? Okay.
Uh, this is saying that you'll collect it all. This is for a meeting. This is to hold a collective meeting.
To hold a meeting?
Yeah.
Hit them on the NAS.
But if you search that email.
Okay.
I bet you'll be able to find, there's, I'll bet you'll be able to find this document.
What I would have to do is unsuspend it and then.
Yeah.
Look through it.
Well, then I would say review meeting of generation of volumes, just to add a little clarity.
This is the second half. You want me to print the first half for you too? There's a hundred and fifty-some pages.
What?
To the bid specs, or not the bid specs, but the actual contract. You want the.
Not the contract.
Okay. That was what I was printing. Okay, wow. Do you want me to stop it? Or do you want that copy?
That's fine if it's already halfway done.
Yeah, it's probably halfway done.
All right.
Hmm? You're saying thank goodness.
Cooking with gas. The only other, uh, I'll wait for it.
It's not one, it's taking forever.
It is taking forever.
It's printing like one page. One page at a time. With a thirty-second pause.
I can't get it up, get it to bring it up on here.
That's all. It's all right, we'll try to get that, um. We'll just try to get that word document found.
Not worth case, I can do a scan and test conversion.
I think I have an idea of how she can get it.
The only other thing that I saw in the Brunswick one of note was on uh. Page twenty-four. On, uh, under specifications where they, it says, uh. It speaks about a, uh. Brunswick cleanup day.
Mm hmm.
I thought that was kind of interesting, that might be something that we'd want to introduce.
Which page?
Twenty-four at the very top. Sorry, I didn't even realize that you guys had moved on to Brunswick, um.
Under numbered.
Your mind like didn't print.
Mine printed all funky too.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's like the pages are.
Oh, not all the pages are numbered.
It's right above section, uh, six.
Right here.
Specifications. Oh, Roman numerals. It looks really funky. But I do remember seeing that. Maybe looking at it. Specification. Three.
So you want to, um. Did you find it?
No, so. If mine didn't, my pages are really screwy.
Page twenty-four, I mean, it's, but it's way beyond actually page twenty-four, because so many of these pages don't have numbers.
Oh, okay, but it says twenty-four.
But it says twenty-four.
So where's it?
Um.
Twenty-three. Alright, maybe just, so that is at the end of five.
I I said it's just above six. That would be the end of. Five.
There's six. Okay.
Turn.
Is it the specification?
It's the specifications.
Okay. Mine, like, oh, here it is, I found it, it's twenty-seven on mine. You know.
No, I don't, I can't figure it out, we all had the same document and printed it and. They printed three different ways.
Well, that's, um.
Anyway.
Moving on.
Found it now, okay, now I know what you're talking about, yes, that's a interesting notion.
Would we want to consider that and add that into the? Or is what we're doing adequate? For the residents in what they can have removed themselves?
I. I think. What we currently do is adequate, I mean, we offer that, you know, we we. Extend the offer from the Medina County, um. Waste, you know, in the summer when they offer that discounted, um. Dumping. Yeah. And to the best of my, I I've never been told of anyone that's come up to Town Hall asking for one of those, um, forms. So I think that, you know, keeping in mind, we're looking at Brunswick's. Bid specs, that Brunswick is a very, very different layout than Hinckley Township.
Oh, agreed.
You know, people, right, and I think that they're maybe talking more like yard waste and things like that, whereas people within Hinckley Township dispose of their own. Yard waste because so many people have. Woods that they can, you know, throw brush into and things like that, so.
I saw this more as, um. Like you're cleaning out your garage and you've got.
Pink cans.
Furniture, no, not even the pink, pink cans are hazardous waste.
Right. Well, I know Brunswick does that, they do, like, every year, they do.
I don't know if they do anymore, I know, I think the the processing center does that now.
Really?
Yeah, directly.
Okay.
Anyway, um. And since we have bulk collection included. I don't know that they would need that.
No, I have, but the oftenators still have a limit, closes property or tarp system. Do you see that? Am I reading the right? It's the third paragraph under specifications.
No.
Oh, that's, that's for, uh. The, uh. I believe for the large unit, the.
For the, right, that's for the.
Forty yard. Forty cubic yard containers, you know, as opposed to.
Like a trash can?
No, forty cubic yard is like on the back of a. A roll on, a roll on.
So this is for.
A dumpster.
Dumpster.
Okay.
Yeah, sort of.
I'll, I'll help you with the words, a little senior moment there, so.
Were you able to find it in your document?
The dumpster? No, I came up with it myself.
And I don't think we generate enough trash from our events that we can't handle with these that are out here either, okay. Right.
Right, yeah. I mean, we have.
Other than that, I saw nothing else in here that I thought was of consequence to. Consider adding to ours. Or make a modification to ours.
Yes, Lynn.
Okay, um. Page twenty-five, according to what I see here, the term. Contracts will be in front of five years, there's an additional. Optional four years for you to get mutually a free fund. Existing on that we have from Kimball, as of right now, doesn't it have?
Three.
Three years?
Mm hmm.
So that's a difference as well, just.
Well. From the previous bid. It was discussed at length, and when you change the term of the bid. It changes the cost of the contract because of the fluctuation in prices. If you extend the term of the contract, the price goes up. Because they can't predict what the future's gonna bring, so they build that into their bid.
Mm hmm, okay. Well, I was just saying that we have a five-year with. Right now, with an optional for three years, they have a five-year with an optional four-years extension, so I just wanted to point that out as.
That's a different, right, that is a difference.
And what, what do we want to do for?
And would we rather see, um, a three-year contract instead of a five-year contract and we can extend, like, increase our. Number of option years?
I mean, I think the survey we did. Yeah, we just. People, people came back, said five-year.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
Most people wanted a five-year, if I remember correctly, but most people did not want a three-year.
It's much easier for planning purposes and.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we're talking just from the results of the survey, then that's what I. Do recall.
Okay.
With the same with three, three option years.
I, I think so, why not, I mean.
I mean, we're not even utilizing the option years this year, but that's.
But that's for a different reason.
We can, yeah. But they want to make changes to it and.
We could if we didn't make changes.
Well, we could if we didn't make the changes, but the changes that we all want to make are.
Wouldn't be able to do.
Necessary, yeah. So. We're working on getting the word document, Lynn and I. And when I say Lynn and I.
Means Lynn.
That means Lynn, but I had the idea.
A leak's idea, yes.
I inspired, I inspired the search. Um, so we are working very hard on that right now, I can see smoke coming out of Lynn's head, so. Um. If. That proves to be fruitful, um, Lynn, if you want to send it to me, I can make the changes or you just documented them all on yours, um.
If you want to.
I'll take them. I'll make the changes.
I don't know if you can read it, but.
Been working with you for almost three years now, so I think I can. Translate.
Good.
Yeah. So, I will, um.
So we still just need to kind of think about the opt-out.
I would say tentatively, i- if you agree, put it in at fifteen. But, uh, yeah, we need to. Go through and pull out. Uh, the township portions that that we discussed.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Just. Remove, basically remove us from.
The management process.
Yes, that, all we're doing is. The silaging.
So there will be no, in this, this contract, there will be no, we're responsible for. Figuring out who the delinquents and following up and all that.
Correct.
How is that going to work with? Because right now we get the information from the auditor's office as far as, would that be then directed directly towards? The. The contractor? Basically, you're the contractor, you're providing a service, somebody doesn't pay for it.
Yeah.
What is you, what do you do as the service provider? You're going to either, you're gonna notify them.
Collections agency.
Or you can.
It's not gonna be the auditor at all, it's going to be however they handle.
Collections. Or they stop the service until you pay.
And as an FYI, that's also why Kimball came back with saying, you know, let's just eliminate the opt-out cap, because they're like. For the people that we have to, you know, go chase after for the delinquencies, they're the people that they wouldn't be, they'd be opting out anyway, so it saves them.
Yeah.
The headache, and I think that's, I think we all realize, the reality is we're under ten percent. We're under ten percent of people who would opt out, but I am more comfortable with the fifteen percent because that's our safety net. To have that additional five percent.
And if we're not doing the delinquents anymore, you know how much that's gonna save just in township? Hours alone of mine.
Mm hmm.
It's, it's. It's upwards of, like, a full-time job for a week. To not have to do that.
Twice a year.
Twice a year, actually, three times a year.
Okay.
Because you have to process it.
Mm hmm.
Then you have to, when the monies come in, you have to.
Mm hmm.
Again.
Mm hmm.
Process and distribute.
Mm hmm. And then the opt-out process is. A full-time job for a couple of weeks.
So the, um, if. We say we go, well, it doesn't matter whether it's no cap, no cap or fifteen percent. The opt-out procedure would be something that the resident would apply.
Directly with the provider.
Provider.
Mm hmm.
So, um. It would seem to me, why, why even have a cap? Because then the provider's counting the fifteen percent. You know, they're gonna have to track, you know, it'd be easier administratively to just. Receive the opt-outs from the resident, if it's a valid opt-out. Then it gets opted out.
Um.
Because the, the trash hauler will have to validate. That either they have. A business or they're taking it to. You know, the Medina site or.
You're assuming that, because, I mean, probably they might just say, okay. Because you're not gonna be able to get another. Trash hauler in Hinckley, you know what I mean, it's. Right now, the township. Needed to have proof. Because the opt-out was such a hot commodity, right? So we wanted to, there are some people that were disqualified. From even being able to opt out because they had a business, but it was in Cuyahoga County.
Right.
So they were disqualified from being able to opt out, um.
By the township.
By the township. I don't necessarily know that a provider. Would go to those. Lanes, you know what I mean?
So, so why even cap?
My point was.
It to keep the cost down. Would be my.
Right.
Because that, the contractor has to have an idea.
Right.
Of what he's realized. Properly.
Mm hmm.
In order to, you know, if you say, oh. Half the township can opt out, now he's bid on, based on. Servicing, you know.
Right. And I guess, I mean, you could put the cap in at fifteen percent, say, and, you know, it's up to the trash hauler if they. Have their little spreadsheet that says, oops, we hit fifteen percent, which we never would, you know, that's. That's their call then, and then it's for them to deny it to the resident, if, you know, and I don't, like you said, I don't think that. You probably reach that number.
You said that was an extra five hundred? To go to fifteen percent? Or did you say that was five hundred something total? Five hundred and seventeen total.
Yeah.
At thirty-five hundred, that's three fifty and one seventy-five, four, five and a quarter, roughly.
Yeah, if we make it, I don't think we're gonna make the thirty-five hundred, but right now it was at thirty-four, thirty-eight. So it's just roughly thirty-five, roughly, thirty-four.
But we never even had, um. Lynn, we never even had three hundred, right?
I'd have to double check, I don't think so, but.
Think, you said it was like two seventy-five or something like that was the highest number?
Yeah, two seventy, well. The first year was.
I would be comfortable with fifteen percent.
You're comfortable with it, so why don't you put in fifteen percent and when next time we take a look at this, we can. You know, rehash it, at least. That number does not include. I, it, we have to, we would probably want to put this in there, the number does not include vacant, vacant properties. Right, we have a separate. We don't track it. But. The numbers. Amounts.
Residents is, the number of residents does not include vacant property.
Correct.
Nor should it.
Or should it, but vacant properties could be that the house is vacant. Or that it's not even, it doesn't even have a house on it.
Right.
So. Just adding that. Yeah, we got a paragraph in here, something about the vacant.
Yes. I can give it back and you can make all the edits if you want. In the documents.
Six point eight, unoccupied or vacant residential units. Shall be permitted to discontinue services on a temporary basis when it's vacant upon notification. Provided by the owner to the contractor prior to the next quarterly billing cycle. Residential units that are unoccupied or vacant shall not be charged service charges for collection services when the contractor has been duly notified. And likewise, six point seven, you've got suspension services for.
Does it say it should not be counted towards the opt-out?
It does, it just says that. They'll be permitted to discontinue collection on a temporary basis, so. It doesn't say anything about opt-outs, so in essence, it's not counted in the opt-out. Although I, you know, at the beginning of the year, when, you know, we would have the opt-out, if somebody had a vacant home, they might have. Submitted for an opt-out. But. So you would have.
Do we need the vacation hold for ninety days if we're increasing the opt-outs by?
Vacation hold's different than an opt-out.
Vacation hold is different than an opt-out, but, you know, I'm thinking of snowbirds, right? That go south for more than just ninety days, maybe they just want to opt out of service for five months. Versus putting it on a vacation hold.
Right, and this says they can only be requested once per calendar.
Once per calendar a year for ninety days.
But I'm sure that people are gone longer.
That is different.
And have contacted Kimball directly these days and. I'm sure.
So leave it?
I would leave that in, and if there's other circumstances, let them.
The resident can deal, yeah, right. Kind of because there's a lot of people that go for six months to eight months out of the year, they're not here. This is letting the contractor know that we want a minimum allowance for vacation suspension.
Okay.
I mean. So go in the post office and ask if you can mail it forward, it's only valid for. So many months, then you have to renew it.
Okay.
But I, just, if you're going to make modifications on that opt-out, just throw, just throw in the fifteen percent, so we can get the verbiage around it. Then we can just. Take a look at this all over again anyway.
Yeah, what does that say?
That was my scribble, I was trying to figure out, you're going to have to wordsmith that, it says, you have to clean up.
Would not have guessed, that's what it said.
I told you.
What's that?
That's a point.
Does that say, okay?
And then, um, when you do get the word document for this, just do a search on the word city, because I recall seeing somewhere in here. City.
Whole thing needs to be removed.
Needs to be modified to respect the contractor's handling it.
Says. That says resident contact, that's not good, you can't even read it. I can read it, resident contact. A waiting meeting for?
Oh, the annual meeting for review of generation volumes. At about time of the annual. Started with an M to begin with, I don't know why.
All right, so, good start, good start, folks. That's it.
All right, we good?
Think so.
Anything else for today? All right, we'll move to adjourn at five thirty-six PM.
Second.
Second of my ash, we're all in favor.
Hi.
Thanks.
Did you just say AM or PM?